Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:00 PM and this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, January 14th. The Board Trustees present are Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Don Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or any electronic devices at this time. Thank you. Tonight's presentation of the colors will be led by Decane Wildcat NJ ROTC Battalion. So I'd like to introduce Captain Davis to introduce our ROTC for tonight.
Good evening, my pleasure. Tonight's presentation of the colors will be led by the Decane Wildcat NJ ROTC Battalion. The pledge will be led by Lieutenant Canis Terraro, the Color Guard Commander, County Youth's Colors Command, their command, Master Chief Pedoff, Lieutenant Watson, Chairman of Texas Flags, with the next commander officer, Commander Eric Lopez, the rifle, is that instant, instant, to that instant, F.B. Herrerado, the left rifle, is that pediles, second class, everywhere, as well, the Wildcat, is the other battalion, Lieutenant Scott, Reston, Chief Victor Allen, and Chief Robert Dunn. At this time, everyone rise for the flag players.
Oh, man! Good! Carry it. Good! Ready? Good! Forward! Wait! Color Guard, hold! Present! Hold!
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Athletes of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge alleges to be Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Carry it. Good! Ready? Good! Present. Please! Hold! Present. Hold! Order! Wait! Up, out, three! Forward! Wait! Ready? Go! Center. Please! Hold! Present. Hold! Order! Wait! Up, out, three! Forward! Wait! Ready? Go! Center. Please! Hold! Present. Hold! Order! Wait! Up, out, three! Forward! Wait! Ready? Go! Left! Three! Forward! Wait! Great job.
Very sharp. Great job. Yes. I'd like to have everyone to please remain standing and observe a moment of silence in your own way, please. Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to thank everyone for your presence tonight. Though the weather is not one we would like to see when we're out at night, but you are here with us and we are pleased that you are here. Our next item is a presentation of proclamations and recognitions for our Board Appreciation Month. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kent Klingerman, a representative from Commissioner Jack Cagle's office, to present a proclamation.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Watson, it's great to see you all tonight. It's my honor to be here to represent Commissioner Jack Cagle from Harris County Precinct Four. He sends his love and regards to you all and his gratitude for all the hard work that you pour into the district. And he has a proclamation that you have right there in front of you. I'd like to read on his behalf. It states, "The Honorable R. Jack Cagle hereby recognizes the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District as Precinct Four Commissioner of Harris County, Texas, and on behalf of the citizens of Harris County, it is my pleasure to recognize you for the distinguished leadership you provide within Spring Independent School District. Your commitment and dedication impacts the lives of the students, families, and fellow educators in our community. Therefore, I hereby proclaim the month of January 2020 as School Board Recognition Month. That sign, R. Jack Cagle, Commissioner, Harris County, Precinct Four." Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Klingerman. And please give our thank you to Commissioner Cagle. It was so kind of him to present this to us. Tell him we're very appreciative of his service and thank you. So our next item is the superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse, and the trustees. Once again, we want to say Happy Board Recognition Month. We just enjoyed a very, a nice celebration of all the service that you do. For those of you that don't know, many of our board members, they spend countless hours volunteering, visiting schools, governing the district, working with members of our community, and attending workshops and meetings. Some of you may think that they get paid for this work, but they don't. It's all volunteer. And so once again, we say thank you for all the tremendous responsibilities that you have for our students and our community in Spring ISD. Tonight, we want to thank everyone who took part in our calendar survey that just closed yesterday. The process for developing our instructional calendar options always includes input from our A.C. Committee, which is our Advisory Committee on Education with teachers and business partners, as well as our community survey. So we asked our community for feedback on two specific calendars. Later tonight, the Board will vote on a recommended calendar, as we do year after year, and will share it with our families and staff so they can start planning for the school year. One of the things that you'll note, we're bringing the calendar forward a lot earlier this year. Our community wants to know what the calendar's going to look like at a much sooner time, and so we're pleased to be able to bring that to you tonight. In addition, our annual Fun Run and Wellness Fair. If anyone is looking for a reason to improve their fitness, or if you made a New Year's resolution that you have yet to start, we have a great reason to start training. Registration is now open for our third annual Fun Run and Wellness Fair, which takes place Saturday, March 28th, at 7:30 a.m. Hundreds of people took part in the event last year, and as you know, for those of you that were able to attend, it was a big success. I think they actually had a video with me winning, coming across the finish line. Maybe it was in my dreams. We'll see. But we're really excited. Last year, we were able to raise $13,500 in scholarships, and we were able to give that back to two of our groups, three of our groups, that really loved having that for scholarships. So we're hoping to get more participation. So if you haven't begun signing up, please make sure that you go to our website, www.springisd.org/funrun, to register for that event. It's really a great event, and our community really loves it. Then next, I'd like to tell you a little bit about something that you might have seen on our webpage or on Twitter, and it's called Get the Scoop Events. So it's no secret that this Board, that the Board and our entire leadership team has been focused on improving our middle schools, and more important, our middle school experience for our students. So as part of that effort, we're excited about a new campaign to familiarize our families and our students with all the great programs that we offer in our middle schools. So every Thursday this month, all seven comprehensive schools, which includes Bailey, Bama, Clotton, Dewitt, Springwood Village, Twin Creeks, and Wells, will be hosting a special event called Get the Scoop. It's a Get the Scoop event for our fifth grade parents and their students. So on January the 16th and January the 23rd, students and their families will be able to visit during the school day, but then we'll also have on January the 30th, an evening event for parents and students as well. The whole goal is to bring our fifth graders and their parents into our schools so they can see the great instruction, learn about clubs and athletics, and start thinking about their courses for their course selection. For more information, families can go to our website to get the details. This does conclude my announcements for today, and once again, thank you all very much for your service.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Do we have any Board members who would like to say a word to us?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Captain Davis, if you'll hit your mic.
I have two things. First of all, you know, Dr. Watson served as the chairperson for the Chamas last, last year, and last Thursday, I had opportunity to go to the luncheon where he was receiving an award for his leadership and his duties as the Chair of the Chamas. So I just wanted to say, Dr. Watson, thank you very much for visiting us well, our community, on the Chamas. Job well done. And the next thing I want to comment, in my capacity as being a member of the Texas Caucus of Black School Board Members, I'm the president of that organization, I was also thanks to Dr. Watson and the leadership team for helping us host the Southern Region Confidence Workshop last week. It was a great success. My colleague did an awesome job, and Dr. Watson, you got other Boards talking about they want to host it next year. So you guys set the standards, and we greatly appreciate you doing that on behalf of the Texas Black Caucus.
Yeah, I need to echo my colleague's gratitude to Spring ISD, you, Dr. Watson, your team, the folks at Teach Up Spring, the technician, Tam. I'm really appreciative of the support you all lent us as we hosted that workshop. Also want to thank my featured speakers by name, Kay Douglas at TESB, Dr. Deidre Williams at the School Reform Initiative, and Sinto Ramos and Quentin Phillips from Fort Worth ISD, drove all the way down, braved the storm, to talk about equity and things we can do to improve achievement in our school districts. So thank you again, and thank you to those folks.
While we're on this subject, I'd also like to comment, I want to thank Trustee Adams, who serves as the Regional Vice President for the Texas Black Caucus of School Board Members. In that event, anybody that knows me well knows I don't really like to get up on Saturday morning. And, but I dragged myself in there, and it was well worth being there. We had, the speakers were excellent. I actually laughed on fire. I've got some things that I would like for us as a Board to talk about and implement in our team building session. I'm texting Rhonda during the workshop, "We need to do this during our team building." So it was really a great event, Trustee Adams. You did us proud. And also, I want to thank the district for allowing us to use that Teach Up facility because other Boards that were there were a little jealous, so. Great event.
I'm sorry. I also, I left out, we had some sponsors that helped us put that on. So I also need to thank Dr. Watson for providing the breakfast. One of the members of our audience, Stephen Farrar, provided the lunch. I want to thank that sponsor. And TESB underwrote a lot of what we did, so I need to make sure I thank everybody.
It was a wonderful thing, but I would like to mention another wonderful thing that happened. Our first work day back, the district hosted a luncheon for our custodial staff, and it was a huge enthusiastic crowd. And Trustee Adams and I decided that we have now a skill serving the line of Spring Creek Barbecue, and that we're ready to go to work.
Well, I'm looking forward to the Fun Run. I didn't attend the first year, last year I went, and it was an exciting event. You do not have to be a runner to go. You can walk, and I did. Walked with a group of folks. There's so much to do for families out there. It was a huge success. We were there before daylight and stayed well into the day, but it's a fun-filled event for anybody to come. I might run this year or jog, but it was fun. And just the information that's given out to our families about all the different community events, so I'm looking forward to it. Ready to get out there.
Also, is there a sponsorship letter that we can share with individuals to help and ask for their sponsorship?
Absolutely. We have a sponsorship packet, so just let us know, and we'll provide that to you, so you can give it to any business partners that you might think might, because the money that we make versus the cost is where we raise the money for scholarships, so thank you. I have a couple, yeah.
I know I've already spoken, but I want to echo what Jana, Trustee Gonzalez, was saying about the Fun Run. People dress up in costumes, and some of them bring their dogs, and some of them are wearing tutus, and it is just a kick. And my husband and I are definitely in the walking crowd. And, but there are lots of giveaways, interesting booths, and there's just so much information as well as goodies. It's a good activity for Saturday.
Before coming to Board meeting tonight, the Board was appreciated by the district administration at a dinner this afternoon. And on behalf of the Board, I just want to publicly thank the Dr. Watson, his cabinet, and our leadership team of principals and their cohorts, teachers, for their support for the Board. But I also want to publicly announce, this is the best Board in the state. I want my Board members to know how much I appreciate them, their support, their work, and everything that they do for Spring ISD. So it is easy for us to serve, but on behalf of the Board, to Dr. Watson and others, we thank you for this evening and for the recognition of Board Appreciation Month. We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will continue with our agenda. Dr. Hill, it's time for Agenda Participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those are considered by the Board. Do we have anyone registered to speak under Agenda Participation tonight?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. So we will continue. Our next item is our Public Hearing for the 2020-2021 Instructional Materials Adoption. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Curriculum and Instruction, Kendall Bradford, please.
Yes. Good evening. This presentation is found in your blue folders. So thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the Board. As you will recall from the presentation last Thursday night, presented in partnership with a few of our fabulous teachers, we are requesting your approval for the upcoming adoption of instructional materials and textbooks following the State Board of Education's Proclamation 2020. These courses include English Language Arts and Reading, Levels 1 through 4, and English as a Second Language, 7th and 8th Grade, and English 1 and 2 for speakers of other languages. We did review the materials with you all, and thank you so much for coming out into the hallway and looking through them, and also talking and asking questions with the teachers. Just as follow-up from the presentation and your time to review the materials, did you all have any follow-up questions that you'd like to ask?
No question, just a comment that I was real pleased and impressed with the material. It was a wide range, very diverse, very engaging artifacts that were included, so I was just really pleased with what we saw.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo Trustee Durant. I was very, it just made me want to read and learn. It's so different than what I experienced when I was in school. So, yeah, I think it's going to be well received by the students.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to your team, Ms. Bradford, of teachers, and all of your committee for the work that they did in selecting the material. As you might, Board members have said, when we visited outside, we were quite pleased with your selection, so thank you to them, please.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Ms. Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak on this agenda under Public Hearing?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees adopt and approve the 2021 Instructional Materials Adoption as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2020-2021 Instructional Materials Adoption as presented by the administration.
Second? It has been moved by Winford Adams and second by Justine Durant that the Board of Trustees approve the 2021 Instructional Materials Adoption as presented by the administration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you.
I know that vote goes by so fast, and I know it's a lot of work put into that. Great job.
And we're happy to be doing it this early for you every year. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Staff, Dr. Julie Hill.
Thank you, President Newhouse, trustees, and Dr. Watson. If you join me on page 10 of your agenda summary, we are going to look at the proposed 2020-2021 Instructional Calendar. The recommendations for the calendars are provided in accordance with Board Policy EB Local, which requires that the calendar for the succeeding year be submitted by the Superintendent and approved by the Board of Trustees. If you would, open your orange folder, which is labeled 2020-2021 Instructional Calendar. I'd like to first walk you through the calendar options that were presented, and just give a little bit of context for how we arrived at this point, and then talk with you about the results from the survey. So every year, our Advisory Committee on Education, which is our representative group of teachers and community members, draft the proposed calendars. We work with them to format them and get them in a place where we are able to then submit them to our community for a vote. When the A.C. Committee worked this year on the calendar, there were two things that were key for them to ensure. One, feedback from the campuses was that they did not like half-days. So they wanted to put together two calendar options for this year that did not include a half-day. They felt that the value of the instruction really wasn't leveraged with the half-days, and so they wanted to instead move those days around and include them so that we could finish the school year earlier. They also wanted to put together an option that considered the request that we had heard from the community and from others on the campuses regarding Veterans Day and having that as an option for a holiday. So I'd like you to take a look at the first option, Calendar Option 1, and just want to talk to you a little bit about how they differ. So the options on Calendar, Instructional Calendar 1, provide most of the PD days on Fridays. There are a couple of long weekends, extended weekends, where there's a Friday holiday and a Monday. The teachers said they wanted to include a couple of those as well because they liked them, that that gave them opportunity to really be able to plan and do some things for their family and for themselves, for their health and well-being. The other option I want to call your attention to on this first one has to do with the Election Day. So one of the things that the group came up with was to use the Election Day because they wanted to leverage that people would already be out voting as a parent engagement day, parent involvement day. So as you can see on Option 1 on the calendar, on November 3rd is the Election Day, and they grouped it together with the Monday and made it a holiday so that kids would not have to come two days in a row, so it gives them an extended weekend there. The other option on this particular calendar is that we wanted you to see, is basically that it ends right after, student's last day is right before Memorial Day. So that was something else that they wanted to, to make sure was included in the two options. If you would, take a look at Option 2, let me point out the differences there. So on Option 2, most of the PD days are set on Mondays. There's still a couple of opportunities where they have an extended long weekend with a Friday and a Monday, but most of the professional development for teachers will occur on Mondays. On this particular calendar, if you look at November, they kept the option to still have Parental Involvement Day on Election Day on November 3rd, but this is the calendar that gave the option for November 11th as Veterans Day as a holiday. That would be a day in which our schools were closed. The feedback from the A.C. Committee was mixed. The committee actually goes to the campus, and they get feedback from their teachers and other staff members, and they bring that back to the meetings. It was pretty much split in terms of individuals whose campuses wanted to have Veterans Day off as a holiday, and those that preferred to not have it off and preferred to have the programs and the recognitions that the schools do for the veterans because they felt that the programs that they're able to put on and the way that they honor the veterans that are part of their parents and grandparents in their community, and even some of their staff members, was something that they wanted to continue. So they were pretty much split in terms of that, which is why the calendars have each of the different options, one showing it as a holiday, the other not. So if you join me in the 23-page packet that you have in front of you, on the first page, it actually shows the breakdown, the first question is to ask, "What's your relationship to the district?" So as you can see here, a little over, almost 44% of the respondents were parents, grandparents, or guardians of students, so 1,230 responses came in from our parents. There were also, the next highest group were 731 responses from our teaching staff, which represented almost 26%. So that's just purely looking at the number of responses, and the total number of responses is 2,834, the survey itself. On the very next page, you can see how the actual vote on the calendar choices came out. So the overwhelming choice of the community that voted on the survey was Option 1, with 75.16% responding, in a total of 2,127 votes, and about 25% voted for Option 2. So what follows on the pages behind it, and it's been our practice to include the open-ended responses, and so what you have here are those people that chose to make a comment about their calendar selection. Not everyone does, but some do. And of course, the responses are all across the board. Some are happy, some are not, so we couldn't please everyone. But in terms of just the pure vote, we wanted to put it in front of you and to ask for your consideration in approving the instructional calendar. Generally, we do approve the calendar that the community works with, however, the final approval is up to you. We can make a vote tonight if you want us to take a look, or make some adjustments, or do something else. We can always bring it back at a later time. But as Dr. Watson said earlier in his remarks, our community was pleased and has continued to urge us to bring the calendars as early as possible because when parents have time, they're able to plan for the upcoming year, and that's their preference. So we worked very hard this year to get the calendar option to you as early as possible.
Someone translate the free-form comment number 38 for me. On page 3 of 23, it's, I recognize two of the words.
You see?
But it says "the Board" at the end, so. Ah, okay. So it's that L-Board, I was like, what is that? Thank you.
And answer that question, we want you.
We want your input. I wanted you on, just wanted you on the record to say that. I wanted you on the record to say that, that's why.
Thank you.
Oh, you make me come this now, Madam President, I've been waiting.
Well, being a vet, I wish there was some kind of way that we could have included Veterans Day, you know, as only one of those approved, but, I mean, on the calendar we approved, the week before that, they're off on the, should I get it right? The 2nd and 3rd, right? And I know the 3rd is Election Day, but. And I know the third is election day, but, uh, Veterans Day, and some of the comments, talk about Veterans Day, there's different comments that I, that I highlighted, you know, about Veterans Day through the package. And this is not new. Uh, we had community members, you know, uh, corresponding last year about Veterans Day and so forth, but we, I go along with the group.
Captain Davis is the daughter and wife of veterans. I can tell you, I, my father and my husband have never been so honored as Spring ISD schools. Uh, the, the students will actually, uh, ask for their pictures and they have ceremonies around them and it's, uh, been a nice tribute. The other thing I've heard, uh, just informally from teachers is they really do not like those days off midweek. Either a Monday or Friday's okay, but apparently the midweek, um, uh, holiday is very disruptive, they said, they tell me.
Just making comments, uh, Dr. Jensen, yes, it's very difficult for our parents and the community when your kids are off in the middle of the week like that to find, uh, proper daycare and babysitting, uh, for our students. And for businesses to see students out in the malls and shopping centers on a Wednesday kind of throws them off as, as well. So, I would also say that I enjoy visiting the schools on Veterans Day to see the programs that the students put on, on that day for our veterans. Uh, it's so nice how they go out of and put on activities to show our veterans on that day that they appreciate them. And as you said, many veterans are there at the programs being recognized. So, I commend them for wanting to continue to do this. Are there any other motions, uh, any other discussion? I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the 2021 instructional calendar as presented in option one.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve option one of the 2021 instructional calendar as presented by administration. A second?
It's been moved by Justine Durant and second by Janet Gonzalez that the Board of Trustees approve the 2021 instructional calendar, option one, as presented by the administration. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those abstained? Opposed? The motion carries six, uh, members in favor of the calendar. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to your committee for getting this out early. Uh, many employers are asking their employees to give me your calendar for the year. And parents will now be able to look at that calendar through December and be able to consider their student as well. So, thank you for doing this so early. Our next item is the consent agenda to our, uh, audience. The consent agenda is reviewed at our work session on Thursday night very thoroughly. Uh, questions are asked, presenters present, and, uh, the board has time to really discuss the items on the consent agenda. So, tonight, we just can't, I will entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second? It's been moved by Dawn Davis, second by Kelly Hodges, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, time for public participation in our meeting tonight. Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak under public participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hill. The board will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized. Texas Open Meeting Act, section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. And Texas Open Meeting Act, section 551.076, for the purpose of considering the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices or a security audit. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 7:37 PM. We will now resume and reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 9:45 PM. We will address items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move the board to approve the First Amendment to the Spring Independent School District Superintendent's Employment Contract as previously discussed by the board.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez, second by Justine Durant, that the board approve the First Amendment of Spring Independent School District Superintendent Employment Contract as previously discussed by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand going up. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contracts of Ellen Perkins, Sharonda Osby, and Brian Wilson upon finding that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employees of the proposed termination pursuant to chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board for Educator Certification that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and of the action taken by the board.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Deborah Jensen and second by Dawn Davis that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contracts of Ellen Perkins, Sharonda Osby, and Brian Wilson upon finding that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employees of the proposed termination, termination pursuant to chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board of Educator Certification that the employees failed to determine, to perform their contracts without good cause and of the action taken by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of the following employee, Danilo, uh, Daniello Martinez, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the board's action and his rights pursuant to chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly Hodges and second by Winford Adams that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of the following employee, Daniella Martinez, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the board's action and his rights pursuant to chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to suspend Daniello Martinez without pay pending discharge and authorize the superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the board's action.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Winford Adams, second by Justine Durant, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to suspend Daniella Martinez without pay pending discharge and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the board's action. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Hearing none. Since there are no other motions or items on tonight's agenda, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, second by Winford Adams, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. There are no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at 9:50 PM.